Call the meeting to order. It was properly posted on June 26th and Commissioner Vaughn will lead us in our prayer and pledge.
Good morning, please stand. Except for you.
Okay, thank you.
Our kind and loving Heavenly Father, thank you for a beautiful day that you blessed us with. Please watch over us this morning as we deliberate in our assigned duties. Be with all of our folks that are out in the fields doing the jobs that we do every day to sustain those that live in Oklahoma County. Father, be with those especially that have to deal with our inmates over at the county jail and help us to be able to resolve many of the issues that have plagued us for years as a result of that building and as a result of not having adequate resources with which to fund and operate it. Father, please continue to bless our families, watch over us, keep us safe and healthy and keep the evil one away from us, Father. In these things we pray in your son's name, amen. Please join me in the pledge.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 21st and June 23rd?
Sooner.
All in favor say aye. Five through seventeen are the consent docket items.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the consent docket items.
All in favor say aye. District One.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have several items. With the assessment of item eighteen, I'll discuss it first. Item eighteen is the annual agreement that we do with the city of Midwest City for hazardous waste disposed for the residents of the unincorporated areas of Oklahoma County. So I'd move that item.
All in favor say aye.
Okay, now the others. Items nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five are all the annual mutual cooperation agreements with various municipalities within District One. Unless you have questions, I would move those items at this time.
All in favor say aye.
Items twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty are the annual agreements with various school districts within District One. Would move those items.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirty-six is to approve Roberta Thomas as a requisitioning officer, Lee Nguyen as a receiving officer, and John Wilkerson as an approving officer for Tyler Muniz program.
Move approval.
All in favor say aye. Thirty-seven is a quitclaim deed from Oklahoma Department of Transportation to the Board of County Commissioners for property located within the city of War Acres, lying in part of Section fifteen, Township twelve, north range four, west of the Indian Meridian. And also that applies to item thirty-eight too. And Stacy communicated to me this morning, I don't know if he did to you, that he was in some, he wasn't feeling well this morning, and he recommended passage of these two items.
I thought he looked better than normal. I'd move approval of item thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
All in favor say aye. District Three.
District Three has the renewal of an interlocal cooperation agreement between the Board of Oklahoma County Commissioners and Circuit Engineering District Five. This is our CED five agreement that we approve annually. Like unto it is item forty, which designates an individual to attend those meetings, and I have in the past served in that capacity and are happy to do so if the commission so chooses. So I would move item thirty-nine.
You want to go ahead and designate you as the...
If you're so inclined.
That's fine with me.
Alright, so I'd move item thirty-nine and forty with me being the one to attend those meetings.
Alright, all in favor say aye. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Sure. Item forty-one is to deal with our jail trust committee. You know, we submitted a written document in the form of a jail trust, and we created, you created that committee for us to study that, and I would just like to make sure that that is being done. And we'd like to also through this document, through this resolution, set a deadline for a recommendation back to the Board of August 11th. I think the goal was to try to have that in place before the sheriff's general election, and that would accommodate that, hopefully.
And I believe their first meeting of that committee is this Friday.
Great, thank you.
That's correct. And so...
So that's great that it's already set, now all we need to do is just kind of give them a time.
And you have done, if I understand, a lot of framework on the, on a proposal.
Yes.
So there's quite a bit of homework that's done, so you don't feel that that date is...
Restrictive, restrictive, no.
You feel okay about that date?
Mr. Draw in my office, who actually wrote the legislation at the Capitol for regional jails, crafted that document, and we used a number of different documents as a resource for that. He put it together, and I've reviewed it, and we just need to submit it to the committee, let them take a look at it and make any suggestions they want so that we can get it into operation.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yes, I move item forty-one.
All in favor say aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your work on that. I know it's not an easy job. Forty-two is the assessor's office. This is with Thim Gan Incorporated. This is our annual agreement, isn't it, Glitter?
He says yes. Move item forty-two.
All in favor say aye. County clerk has State Hughes Consulting Group. That's the annual agreement.
Move approval.
All in favor say aye. David Barnes, you want to... I'm sure these are all just annual agreements.
These are five of the, I believe, fourteen agreements that we have every year with these fire protection districts and fire departments, and they are routine in nature.
Chairman, I'll move items forty-four through forty-eight.
Alright. All in favor say aye.
Thank you, David.
Good morning. Item forty-nine is from engineering. It's just a long-term lease agreement with Stanley System Copier.
Move item forty-nine.
All in favor say aye. And then fifty is for discussion of possible action for the chairman to sign on behalf of the Board, OEMS, CAP Division Progressive Invoice Affidavits Regarding the County Jail Roof Project.
I wonder if we can get somebody that can talk about that. Oh, Chantel. We got the brains in the office now.
Reutilizing the state contracts for this project, and so one of the requirements the state has is that each invoice is signed off on. So we're bringing those invoices to you, the progressive invoices, usually on a smaller project, they just do one invoice for the project. These are progressive, so you're going to be seeing these as the project proceeds.
Alright, thank you. I know that's all my question.
The invoices are, go through a review process, and then they come to the Board for final approval and signature.
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor say aye. Health and Safety has item fifty-one.
Second.
Does she want to speak, Dan?
Yeah, let her speak.
Enlighten us, son.
You know, I'm sorry, I'm trying to rush you out through this meeting because I was about five seconds late, and people are so impatient about it.
I'll speak, good morning.
Thank you, good morning.
Do you need more? As you know, we have an ongoing issue at the jail with mold, and the county has been working diligently to try to resolve some of that, and we've done remediation in the kitchen. There was a bid last week that was opened regarding the HVAC unit that will be awarded soon, and we've done some indoor air quality testing as well in some of the places that appeared to be the worst, and this report gives a breakdown of those air quality tests. Don Gust from my office is prepared to discuss it further if you need that, or show it on the screen if you want to see any of that. But basically, the outcome was the air outside is much worse than the air inside the jail. The highest concentration of mold spores was in the conference room on the first floor of the jail, and it was eighteen percent of what the outside air was. So although there's airborne mold spores in the jail, there is everywhere that you go. It's Oklahoma, it's spring, there's lots of issues going on, but we continue to work to try to remediate those issues over there.
This should help us address a number of the tort claims that have been filed.
It should.
Okay, very good. That's all I need. I'll second again.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Rob?
Hi-T report. Good morning, everyone. This is a standard renewal for disaster recovery operations at MidCon Data Center, and this allows us to store our equipment in there in event of a disaster and make sure it's backed up and allow us the ability to recover if there's ever something that happens here.
I've had the opportunity to tour this facility with Rob, and it's very impressive and gives me some comfort that our data is secure.
Definitely helps me sleep better, and I'll tell you that.
Okay. All in favor say aye. Jamie with the number fifty-three, just standard renewal?
Yes.
Okay. With Hyson Crep Elevator Corporation, who provides the elevator maintenance to the J.B. Bureau. All in favor say aye. Tyler, fifty-four. Fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight.
Tyler's got a big presentation. This is something that they've done with the Planning Commission. It was a request from us to look at all these special use permits that have been out there for decades.
Okay. First, we'll take your, the more routine resolutions here first. This first item fifty-four is a rezoning of this property on Waterloo. That is to become, with your approval, a commercial entity, more like a shopping cart of different types of offices and businesses off of Waterloo Road. They have met all our requirements. There is a road to be built, and they intend to build that road to meet our standards. At this time, their Planning Commission recommends that you approve this plot. We had no protest. Everything is up and up.
I might add that we had a couple of protesters, I've met with both of them, out there at the property. One at the property, just talked to the other one on the phone, and their main concern is drainage, which is at the southwest corner of that property. And the drainage has been provided so that it will not release any more water than normal, you know, as usual. So the drainage has been dealt with. The zoning, I mean, virtually across the street from this property is a used car lot. There really is no zoning in Logan County, and that's what's across the street to the north of this location. And so Logan County can do anything, or if people can do anything that want to, that own property on Waterloo in Logan County, and so it's turning to a commercial use out there, and this is appropriate. I think it'll be a fine development for this area.
Are there any citizens here to speak about that item? If not, is there a motion?
I'll move approval of item fifty-four.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Item fifty-five is the final plot of Addington Farms. It's a sub, a single-family residential subdivision. They have met all our requirements. They've posted bonds for the maintenance of the roads for a two-year period completion. The roads have been built, and there's erosion control bond on hand, and they've met all our requirements for the final plot.
This particular addition is well done, and there was, I've met with a couple of the individuals that own the properties there to the west that were concerned again about drainage. The drainage has been dealt with, and I think it's in good shape.
Now, this is section one. This is the first phase of this. It's going to be a much larger subdivision.
All in favor say aye.
Okay. Item sixty-six is a rezoning of property that gentlemen would like to put a saloon at, and it's near the proposed turnpike interest, and this is the second attempt at this zoning. You've turned this item down previously, and the Planning Commission recommends that you also revoke this item.
Is anyone here to speak on this item? Mr. Grant.
Commissioner, I live about a mile and a quarter, mile and a half. I spoke to neighbors in the area, we don't want that out there. I mean, there's just really no reason to have a saloon in the middle of nowhere. That's why I'm...
Okay.
Thank you.
Much less in the middle of a residential area?
No, I'm sorry.
I said much less in the middle of a residential area.
Okay, well, if they want a drink, then go to the movies.
Alright, anybody else to speak on that item? If not, I'll move that we not approve that. All in favor say aye. Go ahead.
Alright, fifty-seven. This is a special use permit that comes up annually. This is a fireworks facility that's on northeast fifty to nine thirty-five. This facility has been there for a few years. The statute requires us to review this annually, so this is just an annual review of their special use permit to sell fireworks year-round.
Has there been a review?
There is no, no comments at all. Not even phone calls.
Okay, thank you. I'll move approval of this.
In a second, but let me ask a question. Tyler, is this the only fireworks facility that we have to review each year?
Yes.
Seems like there's lots of others.
They're not ours.
Yeah.
They're not ours. They're in Cleveland County.
Of course, they're just sales. This must be because of the size or something.
Well, they could only sell fireworks previously, before this statute came into effect twice a year. It's during the Fourth of July weekend.
Oh, and all the others are seasonal.
Seasonal type.
Okay.
This particular ones can go year-round. They do other things besides fireworks. They sell flowers during Easter time, and, you know, those kinds of issues also. But it is our only year-round fireworks facility.
Gotcha. That answered my question, thank you. I'll second.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Okay, item fifty-eight. If you don't mind, I'd like to pass out these. Planning Commission has reviewed a lot of resolutions that were done back in the sixties, seventies, and eighties that are still in the books. These projects never, most of them did not go into effect. The properties have changed, landowners have changed several times, and the people who have bought these properties were unaware that these properties were zoned in this particular manner. Our most recent case is where we had a mobile home park that was proposed next door to a A-class, I guess, residential district. Most of the homes in that area are million or above in cost, and they didn't realize that the property next to them was already zoned for mobile home parks. And so they're surprised when the developer came through to build it. Of course, they protest, but this was done a long time ago. So in that light, what we tried to do is review all the ones we got out there that just, just never have developed. And we also proposed a change in our regulations that allow for those that go away after five years if they're not developed. So these are various projects. If I could start with the first one, Resolutions zero sixteen eighty-five, done back in January of nineteen eighty-five. This was supposed to be a mobile home park, and as you can see, there's a mobile home park next door to it, but the actual property never developed, and that's since nineteen eighty-five. The Planning Commission is recommending that we revoke this particular one.
That we do what?
Revoke it.
Let me ask a question. Chair, Council, is the proper motion to revoke the special use permit previously granted? Is that sufficient?
Let me confirm the proper...
I'm just looking for the appropriate wording. The motion to revoke the special use permit currently, or previously awarded. Thank you. Okay. I'll move to revoke the special use permit regarding item fifty-eight A.
All in favor say aye.
Item B, Resolution two fifty-three shady three, was approved October eleventh, nineteen eighty-three, and this was also for a mobile home park. Since that time, the property has been sold several times. It's been divided up, and the Planning Commission recommends that this also be revoked.
Second, and let me add, Tyler, we sent, of course, notice to all these people, and they either came or indicated that they didn't have any opposition to revoking these, because they didn't know they were there.
Yeah. Letters were sent out to all of these landowners to be here today in case they wanted to protest it or whatever.
Anyone such landowner is here and I believe wishes to speak?
I just had a question.
Yeah, you have to speak into the mic. We got told a while ago he couldn't be heard online.
Okay, sorry. I'm just curious as to what actually constitutes a mobile home park? So many mobile homes or meters, does anybody know?
A mobile home park is one that legitimately came through the Planning Commission for approval for those, and they have individual lots and those kinds of things. It's not a homeowner's one mobile home or two mobile homes.
For rental.
These are rentals.
Yeah, I was just strictly curious in case one of my grandkids wants a home out there and it's a mobile home. That's all it was, you know. And it wasn't in the letter that we received, so I said I'd stop by and ask.
Sure, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, as long as they have two acres of land, they can put a mobile home.
Okay. And I'm not saying it's ever going to happen, it was just a big question mark, so appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
We're not restricting mobile homes here. We're looking at old resolutions that's been on the books for years and never developed. In this case, this one is nineteen eighty, no, this one's nineteen seventy-two.
I think there's, I think there is a motion and a second.
Okay.
Mr. Burke?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
Okay. The next one is a, another mobile home park, and this was done in nineteen seventy-one, December twentieth. And if you're looking at that, it never developed. In fact, there are several homes out there now on that property, so.
And there will, there will be more now that say that those, the people who are buying out there will know that the property can no longer be occupied as a mobile home park.
Yeah. Problem with this is that most of the landowners out there don't even know that this exists, and we want to get it off the books, so they can't do that.
Okay. Moving on.
This is not restricting, but putting a mobile home out there now, it goes, mobile home park.
Right.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second item fifty-eight C.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
That was item C?
C.
Okay. Item D, nineteen seventy-one, approved. This is another mobile home park, and the request here is to revoke this one as well.
Second. All in favor say aye. Aye.
The next one is two thirty-seven double zero, done in two thousand. This is a golf driver greens, believe it or not. It's a, it's a well-kept secret. The gentleman that owns the property works with the Luther School District and other districts to have small tournaments for kids and teach kids how to golf, basically. And it's not advertised at all, but it does exist. It's still in being. It actually went into effect. It does exist. And the recommendation here is to just leave it alone, let it go.
I was going to ask that because...
Take no action at all.
Move, we leave it alone.
And I'll, second, and I'll say that I don't know that I'll be going out there. I have trouble enough finding my ball without driving it into something called Wild Horse Canyon.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
Okay. The next one is sixty-five dash seventy-seven. This one here is for a motorcycle track, believe it or not. I understand that the motorcycle track was in being with the first owner, but he sold that property and long gone changed to hand twice more since that time, and the current owners has no desire to continue with a motorcycle track out there. So they want this to go away, and the Board, I mean, the Planning Commission asked to revoke this special use permit.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Okay. Item G, three twenty-five dash eighty-two, is a sand pit operation, and I imagine it was a sand pit for years, and as of today, it's not in operation. It probably hasn't been in operation in the last ten years, that there. But, you know, there's, there's no homes around it, it's just an open property, and I imagine the owner of the property may want to do a contract with someone to dig more sand one day, so the Planning Commission has just recommended that we just leave it alone, leave this on, take no action whatsoever on the sand pit.
Move, we take no action.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Okay. The next one is twenty-two dash seventy-one. This is another mobile home park that's not in use, done in February nineteen seventy-one. And the property owners are not aware of it, and, let's see, no, I'm sorry. The mobile home park never went into use, but they did put a, Faith Electric put a boat and maxi storage center there. That's what is, that you see in the picture there. There's a boat storage area, but it's not a mobile home park. Faith Electric. They're asked, Faith Electric is asking that it just remain just like it is. They have no plans to do a mobile home park, but they said they don't want to take the special use permit away or interfere with their property.
That's your district, what do you think?
I think if that's their desire, that's fine. It's on the record that, what it is, so maybe they plan in the future to put a mobile home park, I don't know.
But maybe they won't, maybe...
Maybe they won't.
Yeah. I'm just thinking about the conflict, because there's not a lot, only these little locks, I mean, these areas all around it.
Looks like it's generally a commercial area with storage buildings, and I don't think that's necessarily, you know, out of context with a mobile home park.
You don't think it's out of context?
With a mobile home park?
Home park?
No, sir.
So what are you using?
I'll just, we take no action.
Alright, second.
Alright, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Resolution one twenty-eight seventy-seven. This is also a mobile home park that's not in use, and the Planning Commission recommends that we revoke this one as well.
Maybe we've reached our limit on demand. Maybe we've reached our limit on demand for mobile homes.
There'll be more coming in the future that are. Yeah.
Move we revoke item fifty-eight, aye.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you, Tyler.
That's the end.
Thanks, Tyler. And this is, actually, there are a number of other sites that, this is just the first however many that were there.
Right.
And...
We've got ten more that's gonna go through the planning commission first and then end up here for your final decisions.
Appreciate that, Tyler.
Thank you.
As soon as folks hear that we revoke these, uh, mobile home parks, they will probably start buying out there for residents, because it's beautiful homes we have in there.
Yeah, could be.
Social Services has an annual agreement with Cox Communication for their downtown pharmacy.
Move item fifty-nine.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Sixty's the claims.
Move the claim.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. No change to the blanket?
Move the blanket.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any other citizens to be heard? Seeing none, Commissioner Commons, District One.
How about Westo, Ruffel, Westbrook, it's the office. We do know that late last night or early this morning that Kevin did call in and congratulate him. I feel good about that.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, if you watch the, just in that regard, if you watch the NBA program that went about two hours and twenty minutes, if you saw the last twenty minutes, that was the best part. The first part was nothing. But the last twenty minutes, Oklahoma City was front and center. We had the highest ratings, actually happened to know because I was in a meeting yesterday with some folks that were there, but the highest rating nationwide for that show was in Oklahoma City. And no, that's no surprise, I suppose. We did, we looked good.
Any other comments?
Not for me.
Okay, any new business? If not, Amber, you wanna open some bids?
First bid is one one seven zero five four five nine. This is a rebid for District One Ship Steel Project, Wood and Sun Caving, B and S Construction and Trucking, and Vance Brothers. Bid number one one seven zero six eight three three is for trailer mounted hydro excavators for District One, Economy Drilling Solutions. Bid number one one eight zero zero one nine eight for Oklahoma County Annex Building Repairs, Holland Construction, Mid Continental Restoration, and MTS Contracting Incorporated. Bid number CW one eight zero five six for sheriff's office uniforms, special ops uniforms, orchid uniforms, Bob Barker Company, and Pop's Products. And that concludes the bid.
Move we return to habitation recommendation.
Second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Is there a motion to recess into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, could I just?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I, I needed to let everybody see my former superintendent, Craig Wallace. Stand up, Craig. Stand up, Craig. Craig was an excellent superintendent. I really hated to see him go 'cause he put us kinda like on the map for district run with the kinda projects and work products that we put out. So thank you very much, Craig.
And now we're buying you some equipment, Craig. Now that you're gone.
Welcome back. All right, now is there a motion to recess into executive session?
Move.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Are we ready to go back to the regular session?
Move we return to open session, Mr. Chair.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Now, action on item sixty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you don't mind, I'll go ahead and do that. On item sixty-seven, public executive session, I would move that we approve the recommendation of the Policy and Governance Committee regarding the Performance Improvement Plan regarding Rob Teal and further direct the performance, the, beg your pardon, the Policy and Governance Committee to finalize and present the performance plan to Mr. Teal on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye.